Two flags of the United States of America, and two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all!
Let's sing it again, stand up!
They're not standing.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Here.
Councilmember Mavvy?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Rosen?
And two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all!
I'd like the council to reinstate the Pledge of Allegiance into our standard meeting agendas. I would like to have that discussion on that topic right now as opposed to later on in the agenda when we typically have discussion topics. And I'd like to have the council vote on that proposal immediately after the council discussion. It's my understanding that our council's rules and procedure don't allow me to add an item onto the agenda at this point. Therefore, first, I am making a motion to suspend the rules and procedure. I request that this item regarding the Pledge of Allegiance be placed on the agenda for discussion right now. I also understand that this motion requires a second and five affirmative votes, and I understand that the motion cannot be debated or amended. So just to repeat the motion, I move to suspend the rules and procedure and request that this item regarding the Pledge of Allegiance be placed on the agenda for discussion right now.
Is there a second?
Amen!
A motion and a second?
Wait a minute.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Alright, that passes to the end seat. Councilmember Miller?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor and colleagues, I move to amend the council's rules and procedure to reinstate the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance previous to roll call at future city council meetings. To be perfectly clear, I fully agree with the change that we made in June to eliminate the Pledge of Allegiance from our standard meeting agendas. I won't elaborate anymore at this time, but I believe the council took the correct action on this matter 100%. However, while the feedback from St. Louis Park residents on all sides of the issue has for the most part been fair, honest, and constructive, there are many from outside of St. Louis Park who are abusing and harassing our city staff, making it very difficult for them to serve the residents and the businesses in our city, which is the very reason for our local government to exist. In addition, in some cases that I personally know of, these people from outside of our city have been abusing, harassing, even borderline threatening some of our residents.
It's America! It's America! We're here for America!
Some people from outside of our city have been abusing, harassing, even borderline threatening some of our residents. I'm genuinely concerned about the safety and the productivity of our city staff and our residents, and that is why I'm making this motion. Perhaps we can take this matter up again at some point in the future.
They're doing it, that's why.
But for now, I move to amend the council's rules and procedure to reinstate the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance previous to roll call at future city council meetings.
There was a motion and a second already, so as we did before, my race, this is true.
Thank you, Mayor Spahn. Thank you to all the residents who have reached out to me and my colleagues on this issue over the last two or three weeks. As Councilmember Miller reported, almost all the messages I received from St. Louis Park residents were thoughtful and respectful. This was not true of messages from people outside of our city and our state.
Liar!
Thoughts included. My messages to the residents of St. Louis Park here tonight and watching elsewhere. Folks, we don't need to stay at the epicenter of a manufactured standoff about what it means to be a liberal person.
I'm asking everyone, please respect my colleagues and let them say their words.
So we know who we are, and it's not this.
Yes.
This circus needs to end.
You're not we the people!
It's impacting our staff's productivity and their mental health, our wonderful staff. It's causing us more...
Well, there's free mental health in our state, so take advantage of it.
We pay your salary!
It's taking your elected officials' time and energy away from working on things that actually impact the daily lives of our residents.
Back our lives! Back our lives!
Folks, let's not have a repeat of the question. Let's let us have, let's let folks around the table do their work, please, please.
We have a local election coming up this fall. It would be a real shame if the upcoming election were dominated by this singular issue of where candidates stand on the Pledge of Allegiance. What loss! But in this day and age, it's possible and even likely that that's what it could turn into. We have so much more to talk about in our awesome community, and the risk alone to our local election isn't worth this circus and this ongoing...
It's a circus! It's America!
You voters from Palm Rapids, Lakeville, Orano, Rochester, wherever you're from, y'all ought to go home and take your energy for civic engagement back to your home. Y'all need to try to make a difference there, however you want to do it, but this is not how we do it. Me and St. Louis Park, we need to reclaim this over-the-top narrative and break the conversation back home. Conversation about the values we share as a community and how we can best embody those values through ritual and more importantly, through our actions.
Yes.
I fully expect this conversation will happen on our own terms and in our own time, and I'm looking forward to listening and to learning. But for now, to protect the safety and productivity of our staff and our beloved, awesome community, and to refuse to be played like a pawn in a bully's game any longer, I am a supporter of the public.
Vote her data!
Vote her lady! Put your life on the line.
Release the voter data!
Yeah!
Two court orders, Dan. Release the data!
Yes!
What are you hiding?
We know what you're hiding.
So I'm here, as my colleagues are here, to talk about my vote, our vote, and stopping to say the Pledge of Allegiance before our regular meetings. When I made that vote, I was simply voting on changing our meeting as a matter of procedure. One thing later, we never voted to say it. I say again, we voted to stop saying it as a matter of procedure before our regular meeting.
And we support you. We support you.
I can talk!
It's the same thing.
To me, the pledge has become routine, as I said when I was in elementary school, right here in Susan Lake. Through rote memorization, I felt that all things that we do lose their meaning when done as a matter of routine. And I thought that the pledge, if we were to say the pledge at different times throughout the year during our more ceremonial meetings, the reasons stated by some of my colleagues that the press ran with were not my reasons, but that did not matter very much. Once the press ran with that narrative on our council, even the five of us who voted for our own reasons, that was just that state, that's where we ended up. There was nothing that any of us up here could have done at that point, once it ran that way. I'm a proud US Army veteran. When I raised my hand, when I raised, when I raised my hand and took an oath to protect... When I raised my hand and took an oath many years ago, it was to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Nowhere in that document does it say that we need to pledge allegiance, not one place.
It's take, yes, it's respect, sir.
You're doing culture!
Now, all seven of us of you are human beings with our own flaws. Over the past three weeks, I have received several hundred emails and phone calls, as I'm sure my colleagues have, from far and wide about the Pledge of Allegiance. Many of them were not in such kind language, one of them even calling for me to be hung. After reading and listening to all of them and doing much soul-searching, I concluded that I made a mistake, and I am sorry. And I'm asking for forgiveness.
I will forgive.
I'm asking for forgiveness from a long list of people who have all been affected by this decision. As I seek this forgiveness, as I seek this forgiveness, I have a challenge for all elected officials throughout the entire country. As this has become a national issue, I am here admitting this mistake on camera in an open meeting. I challenge you, regardless of the level of office of government, to go on camera as I am and admit the mistakes that you have made while you've been elected in office, and ask forgiveness, such as I am, so the healing can begin. Aside from... Aside from the separation with my wife, the loss of my father, mother, and father-in-law, these past three weeks have been the most difficult time of my life. And I'm hopeful, however, that we can correct this mistake and get on to running the business of our city. As our longtime former mayor Jeff Jacobs always said, "It's not rocket science, people. Drink, drive, and flush."
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here, my words are for you as members of our community. As I stated last week during our study session, I am in favor of returning to speaking of Pledge of Allegiance at the start of the year. So coming to this conclusion has taken several hours of reading people's emails, both thoughtful and extreme in their deliberation, as well as listening to voicemails. One Saturday morning, I received a call before 6:00 in the morning from someone in Texas about this topic. Our community has pride in what we do. We have strength in coming together and talking in conversation. Our residents have expressed their dissatisfaction in this council vote and also their alliance with the council's choice. It's through this reading of both points of view, as well as hearing from residents who are okay with things as they are, that I come to the conclusion, after talking, hearing, reading from a couple hundred folks within the Ward 3 area and beyond, that for the sake of our community and our staff, we have much business to tend to beyond this conversation. For example, we have an opportunity to revitalize our neighborhood business districts. We've got some underway in the Walker Lake area, as well as Texatanka Shopping Center. There's also an opportunity to engage entrepreneurs and pop-up businesses. I invite you to engage with me with your ideas about strengthening our neighborhood shopping districts in the coming weeks and months, and I'll be bringing some legislation forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Spahn. Welcome to all the people that are here in the room and evidently watching across the state and country. Thank you to our staff here at City Hall. As I said last week, they do the hard work here providing good quality municipal services. It's a shame that they've had to bear the brunt of the anger that many people have directed towards this city and its people. A staff didn't ask for this controversy and shouldn't be made to pay for it. My apologies. I sincerely want to thank the citizens of St. Louis Park, and particularly the voters of Ward 4, who give me the opportunity to represent them on this council. I appreciate that even though I may have a passion towards matter initially on this issue, they have not, sharing their divergent opinions with me in respectful and reasoned manners. Well, there were a few, you did what? But generally, they've been very respectful and thoughtful. I've had the opportunity to have deep and meaningful conversations with so many about patriotism, service, and community. I've learned a lot, and again, been impressed with the depth of love for our city, country, and community that St. Louis Park citizens have. You're the best. And I also want to apologize to immigrant citizens throughout the city, state, and US. You didn't ask me to vote to change our standing agenda, discontinuing to routinely say the pledge, and why people blame you for this is beyond me. Though I talked for others, I was the one moving to take the pledge off the standing agenda, as I wanted to change the opening of our meetings. Never even got to talk about my proposals to say my country tis a deed, as the outcry from certain segments to no longer saying the pledge was so loud. I want to talk to our national media, specifically the fake, excuse me, Fox News Network. A couple of questions for them. Number one... Number one, why don't each of you... Number one, why don't each of you start with the pledge? It only takes 15 seconds. Are you unpatriotic on your network? Number two, why do you seize on issues like this, seeking to divide us all? We are hoping to do this, to have a patriotism debate, only to change the opening door to our meetings. St. Louis Park doesn't have the liberty to have its own council agenda? Where's the justice in that? This council comes down here every week and works on our city and America's problems. You want people to hate us because we start our meetings in a manner you deem politically incorrect? What is this issue during the heartbeat era? Certain bullies trying to dictate acceptable behavior. This is America. I pledge allegiance to it. As we strive to have liberty and justice for all, please let us have our liberty here and respect our local control. As the motion before us, I've heard from over 100 residents equally divided, half saying they want us to discontinue routinely saying the pledge, the others asking to support adding it back into the agenda. Like those of us on the council, they are divided. And like us on the council, the vast majority of the citizens have shared their opinions respectfully, asked us to stop fighting over the issue and get back to working on the issues that challenged all of us. Climate change response. Transportation and transit. Creating a quality healthcare system to support affordable everyone. Tearing down barriers to success for all of us. That and providing high-quality municipal services to a great community. For the voters and citizens of St. Louis Park, I want to assure you, we will. So, in the sincere desire to move this matter off our current agenda, I'll vote to put the pledge back on the regular agenda and support the mayor in calling for all of us to join, if you choose to do so. I'll also invite all of those that have an opinion on this issue, pro or con, to please join us here or in your own city in moving to address bigger and more challenging matters ahead of us. Matters that can't be solved with a 15 second pledge. The challenges are many, and require us all to work on them. We do need to become one nation, indivisible. So please join us in working on it, not just complaining about others and how they open their meetings. The work of democracy calls all of us to participate. Please join us.
We're constitutional Republicans! I see a bunch of people who love their country. And for my St. Louis Park neighbors, thank you so much for being here. And for all of you who are visiting our humble city, and anyone out there who's just tuned in to this issue, I am confident that every single one of us loves our country and our... And our being here and engaged in this conversation is an expression of our love of country and upholding these values. And I know that that's true for you, for the folks tuned in, for the folks on this dais. I've been here for 10 years, committed to furthering this equality and justice for all, liberty and justice for all. So I don't need anyone to pledge allegiance to the flag for me to understand that they respect the values that are inscribed in the Constitution. The very fact that someone comes to our meetings and chooses to engage in our community demonstrates clearly to me that they care about our committee, our community, and that they are committed to the values in our Constitution. And the richness and the complexity and the diversity of our great country means that we have this in common, right? That we love our country and that we share this respect, but we express it in different ways. So I've taken an oath of office three times now, and that oath asks me to swear to uphold the US Constitution, to uphold the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and to uphold the St. Louis Park City Charter. And I take that oath seriously and that pledge seriously. Many of you may not agree with the many ways in which I express my patriotism and my love of country, and I'm guessing that I'm not going to see eye to eye with some of you on how you express yours. And again, that is the richness of our community. For example, the US Flag Code is pretty clear in Section 8, Article D, that wearing images of the flag on your clothing is a disrespect to the flag. Folks, please. The St. Louis Park residents with whom I've spoken and emailed have nearly all been respectful and thoughtful and reflective. And I would expect nothing less of my wonderful neighbors. And some agree with us and some disagree. And that's okay. My St. Louis Park constituents understand that no matter what your faith is or your lack of faith, what your background is or your politics, if you're concerned about wanting to say the pledge as a sacred thing more, or if you're concerned about separation of church and state and don't, that we respect and engage in conversation in our community together to make it a better place. And we will continue to do that regardless of what happens at this vote tonight. We'll continue to do that without any requirement or mandates to prove allegiance or loyalty. Show up, that's all you need to do. I don't know what the right number of times is to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Is it once a day? Is it... Is it... Is it once a month? Is it every single meeting? Since I've been on the council for the last 10 years, as we've done it, the first and third Mondays of the month, okay? The motion is reinstated, and I'm going to be supporting that tonight. But I'm not sure that if you say the pledge three times a month instead of this two, that you're more patriotic. Or if you say it one times a month, you're less patriotic. So you know what? Everyone is free to say it as often as you want. And if it's too much for you when you come in this chamber, you don't need to say it at all. Just join us and engage in our community.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all!
Many of which are vile, vulgar, and threatening, as I have received, I would challenge some of the news stations that have riled up this response to actually play those messages on TV without blinking them out. It is not patriotic to have that vile, vulgar, threatening email.
So many times I've been hit, I rally...
The problem is that it's made it a challenge, as my colleagues have pointed out, for our city to conduct business in the way and out of the way that our citizens back home. So when my constituent, Chris, he called me and he said, there's a, or he emailed and he said, "There's a branch in front of the stop sign that's grown over it, and it's causing some public safety concerns." On a regular day, we'd be out there within four hours trimming that branch and making sure that our public safety and public services are working. But right now, those kinds of things are lost in the vile, vulgar, and threatening emails that we are receiving, not from our residents, but from folks far away in San Francisco. So today, I choose a path of practicality. We need to end this focus on the pledge and get back to the hard work and the good work that this community is doing to secure affordable housing for all of our residents. To continue to work on our local climate to work on our local climate action plan because the federal government is sure they're responsible on that. Yes. And to continue to make our community a great place to live and learn and work and play. Our community, every single day, demonstrates our country's values and working toward liberty and justice for all, and I stand by actions over words any day.
It's a proverb that goes something like, "May you live in interesting times." You live in interesting times. We all have our reasons, and I can rehash mine. Many of you were here last week. But our work, I agree with my colleagues, that our work needs to continue. And right now, that's not possible. For the last month, this is largely all that we've dealt with. And I also just want to sort of highlight, well, I'm gonna deviate from what I was gonna say tonight, because I think tonight's meeting dictates it. I want to turn my attention to my colleague Steve Paulpin. Humility is one of the most important leadership traits that any single person can ever have in their lives. And for those of you who are in this room or under the age of 18, just starting your lives, that's a lesson you need to learn. That's a lesson you need to learn. I don't particularly care why, I don't particularly care why, it's the fact that he is asking for forgiveness and displaying humility. It is, I'm gonna close on this, because I don't need to go on for a long, long time. I have told people before many, many times that my wife and I picked St. Louis Park, we're not from here. I grew up in Kansas and she grew up in Duluth. We chose to live in St. Louis Park because it was the sort of community we wanted to raise our children in. It's the sort of place that my public school teaching wife wanted to teach kids. This last month has been, without a doubt, and in talking to prior mayors and council members, I think they would agree, probably the most challenging period that we faced in years and years and years, maybe going back 40 years. But I have never been happier and more proud of my parents than I have been in the last four weeks. People on all sides of this argument strongly opposed the decision the council made, strongly supportive of the decision the council made, all of them treating us with respect and acknowledging that this was not an easy time to be one of us. Now, understanding, we all signed up for this. I get that, I get that, totally get that. We put our names on a ballot and agreed to come up here. But the reality is that this is uncharted territory for just about any city in the country, especially for folks that are part-time council members. So I just want to say to all of the residents who are here, and I'm not, I'm not pitting residents and non-residents, I had a lot of, I had a lot of people who contacted me who weren't from St. Louis Park who were also respectful, clear, strong, strong opinions, but respectful. But for the people who live in my community, I just want you to know that I've never been prouder to be your mayor than I am tonight. With that, I'm going to just ask for a vote on the motion, and to clarify, the motion is to return to our prayer practice and say the Pledge of Allegiance as we have before our regular meetings. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We're gonna take a 10-minute break, as we did last week, because we have business that we need to conduct. So for those of you who are here for this item, you can certainly head out on your lawn or outside. Thank you very much.
It's whose republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all!